Good morning. We're gonna call today's Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'll ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, everyone, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall of legislative chambers. In the back, there's an automatic defibrillator in case needed for health reasons, and if you have an electronic device, I'd ask you to mute it, turn it off, or put it on silent. With that, we will call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 10th, 2019. Item B, calling meeting is set Tuesday, January 7th, 2020 as the day for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle's vote will not appear due to technical difficulties, but he votes yes, as the rest of commissioners, motion passes six zero.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to Resolutions D, E, and F. What's the will of the Board? Motion to approve and adjourn by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll now call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson's absent. Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Mr. Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one, minutes and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting, held Tuesday, December 10th, 2009. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and processed through Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. Item C is approval of a resolution authorizing the clerk to make certain payments while the Board is adjourned, signed, and die. What's the will of the Board?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Not appropriate.
Okay.
Chair Rogers.
Noted.
Motion passes six zero.
Whoever put it on. Consent agenda, we have 11 items on the consent agenda. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
We'll go to items A, a resolution honoring Ruth Madlock for her more than 40 years of service to seniors and low-income individuals in the Douglas County area. Mr. Clerk.
Morning, Danesh Douglas County Clerk. Thanks very much for letting me put this resolution on. Ruth Madlock's been with the Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership for 40 years, and she's retiring this month. But NCAP works with a lot of low-income individuals and seniors, and she's been through a lot of changes over the years, but she's been with the organization the whole time. You know, she's talented enough and has enough connections to... could've gone and worked other places, but she decided to stay with NCAP. And it's not just her work at NCAP, but just in general. She was helping out people in need before she worked there, and she'll be helping out people in need after she retires. And she's kind of one of those people that makes you feel like... I've only known her for three years myself, but she makes you feel like you've known her your whole life. So, she's not here today, but Friday, there's a retirement party for her, and I'm gonna present her the resolution then. So, I appreciate you guys, or appreciate the Board presenting her this resolution. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to add to your comments, yes, my tenure on the Board she has. She seems like she's an institution. She's been there. So, for the Board, the clerk's going to send that up, so if everybody can be on notice... you wanna say something? You wanna say something? Okay. If everybody can be on notice to get it signed, and we'll get it to him. Commissioner Boyle.
I just want to say that she really does the essential work at the county, you know, why we're here, to take care of people who are in trouble, who need help, senior citizens, and I can appreciate that with my hair. But senior citizens and also low-income individuals, and I guess I'm in that class too. So, anyway, I just want to thank her for the courageous work she's done and what a great service she's done for the people of the county. And I congratulate her and wish her good luck and good health.
Oh, okay. So, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, is it?
I don't think we have one.
Is there a motion second? Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please just vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item B, resolution honoring the county employees retiring Mary Jo Copias, who's retired from Douglas County Treasurer's Office after 32 years of service. There are motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I don't see Mary Jo here. I don't know if Tim Kavanaugh would give her time off to come down, but he's... I've worked with her the last number of years. She's been with the county pretty much her whole career. I know her going back to even before she joined Douglas County. She's a great woman and a real professional, and has done a great job. And I know that Tim would agree with that. She's worked in John Ewing's office for the most recent part of her career, but I believe before that, she had other duties at Douglas County.
That's correct. Tim Kavanaugh, Treasurer's Office. Mary Jo is very humble and does not seek attention. That's why she's not here. We went to junior high together, Mary Jo and I, at Norris Junior High. Yes, she's that old. Anyway, she's a fine lady, and we're gonna miss her tremendously. I just wish she would've taken advantage of it, to be in the spotlight at least once.
Well, you're exactly right, Tim. She's not one for the spotlight, but she is a great worker and has done a great job for Douglas County, a great public servant. Please pass on to her my personal congratulations on a job well done.
It will do. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Boyle. Also, I'd like to add, too, I would assume that she was hired by the late and great Sam J. Howell.
Thirty-two years ago.
Clerk's office, so... and he was my father-in-law and a great public official, and always hired good help, particularly from South Omaha. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, there's a motion second. Tim, there's a resolution for her. She wants it. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item four is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners-related items that are not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Welcome back. Probably since the last time you came, there's a system in place, so that's gonna start when you talk, and the light'll let you know when you're done.
Okay. Sean Malat, 10404 North 132nd Street, Omaha. Morning to everybody. Happy holidays. Of course, I'm coming before you regarding the Papio NRD dams and their quest to build them. I've typed up what I have to say today, in case my testimony goes a little over. But I would respectfully come before the Douglas County Board to bring the Commissioners up to date on the Papio NRD's current strategy of constructing dams in northern Douglas County, specifically Dam Site 10. The NRD has hired the Corps, U.S. Corps of Engineers, to perform a study on flood risk in the Papio Creek Basin. This study was funded by $3 million of taxpayer contributions. Since the inception, the Corps has held four public meetings, and most recent meeting was held December 3rd down at the Scott Center, down at UNO. I believe Claire Duda was in attendance at this meeting. While these meetings were very well-attended, mostly in opposition to the building of the dams, but it allowed for public comments. And in fact, at the December 3rd meeting, it was documented by a court transcriber. I personally attended three of these meetings, and unfortunately, walked away from them with more questions than answers. While I'm expecting that the Corps is doing a careful and objective analysis of the need for dams and other proposed projects, I believe it's imperative that the taxpayer-funded study allows for transparency. Since Douglas County citizens are the majority of the stakeholders of the proposed projects, the Douglas County Board has a vested interest in ensuring the accuracy and integrity of the Corps' study. This is why I come before you today. After reading and rereading the massive report provided by the Corps, and I have a copy of it, I downloaded it from their website. This is the report. I personally found that a $1.3 million error of underreporting land costs, as well as a few other inaccuracies. To enable more accuracy, to more accurately comprehend the Corps' finding, below is a list of information that would be helpful in analyzing the findings presented and allow for complete transparency. With that, I am respectfully inviting this Board to formally request a copy of the Corps' detailed underlying data used in their study. And I've listed 10 such items. I can go through them, and I'll do it rather quickly. The methodologies used to compute visitation numbers, methodologies used to compute the reduction of visitation numbers when integrating other dam sites, the actual data used for the recreational model, the detailed accounting of all maintenance costs on the dam sites. This would include costs associated with past and future dredging, such as the clearing of and cleaning of Zerinsky Lake and Cunningham Lake, that I believe's been, had to be performed twice. A statement whether the costs associated with the dredging and cleaning have been included in the maintenance costs, a detailed description of the Corps' methodologies and approaches used to estimate ground floor elevations. And there's about, I think it was 4,100 properties that they included as part of the cost-benefit study. I'd also ask that they give the methodologies for determining replacement values of those properties, and as well as deliver the Excel database spreadsheet, just used to find a couple items within the report. And I'd also like to ask this Board to request a transcript, copy of the transcript from the meeting. I believe with a direct request from the Douglas County Board, the Corps will respond more quickly, thus providing the documentation more timely, so that those of us that are interested can analyze the documentation more timely. I mentioned Dam Site 10 in the introduction. That is the dam that is located just south of our farm. The dam site is northwest of the intersections of Highway 133 and 36 in Douglas County. I provided a map on the back page of my handout. If built according to the Corps' study, 11 homeowners will be displaced, two Douglas County roads will be closed, and over 375 acres of land will be removed from the rent rolls and farm production. And my brother and I looked at the map, and many of these farms have been held by Nebraska farm families consecutively for over 100 years. Two of our properties, as well as others, have received Exarban Foundation's Pioneer Awards. I am here representing a majority of the landowners affected by the Dam Site 10, and I thank you for considering the request.
Thank you, Sean. Unless you're making a point of fact that there's no...
I understand.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing us. Are some of your properties involved in the acquisition for this dam site?
Yes. If you'd look at the map, and I can put it up here on the screen, if that would be helpful.
Well, Sean, I'm gonna leave you from that, because there's a certain... on judgment, he's got his clarification, so he clarified it is your property, so I...
Okay.
I'm gonna leave it at that.
I can follow up with you.
Okay, that's fine.
I simply would like to respond to say, I would like to put this on our agenda at one of our first meetings in January for the Board to have the opportunity to consider making a formal request to the Corps. This is in conjunction. We're working with Dr. Stephen Schultz of UNO. This Board has hired him once before to do a study of values affected by dams, and we're working in conjunction with Stephen. So, I hope maybe as early as January 7th that we have this on our agenda for our consideration.
Well, Sean, be on notice January 7th.
I, too, would like to see it on the agenda formally, and I would like to... I see Mr. Kudlek in the audience, and I'd like to have our county engineer surveyor here to comment on the closing of the roads, and also our environmental services director, Mr. Holmes. I believe, and this is something I'd like our staff to research, I believe this dam site and the building violates the code that was adopted by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners regarding environmental impact and services. And, you know, in light of the fact that these dams are really recreation, they're not for... they don't hold water for... when a big rain comes, you know, something like 34 dams failed in Iowa, and in Texas, it was a higher number. They're not for flood.
Okay. So, Sean?
The key that we're asking is transparency and getting documentations. I feel that coming from the Board, that they might be more responsive than coming from someone such as myself.
Okay, nope, January, then you should be there January 7th.
And if anybody has any questions...
No, January 7th on your calendars back there. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I hate to be a real stinker, but I thought she said citizens' comments, and then I read the rule again, and I don't get it. It says there won't be any back and forth, and you won't take any action on items presented today, although that's not technically a presentation. She's a citizen and commenting. But it seems that you can vary the rules for some people and not for other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Just note for the record, a fact, no action was taken today, and all points were of clarification. Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none. I'm gonna make a change and move to item G, because I want to make sure this is as public as possible, what's here. Item G, we're gonna go through this. This item one is the weekly personnel report that is as submitted. Two, there are no legislative issues that I know of, but other items, I'm gonna add. Three, there's an emergency item that must be requested, and so I'll state it and then ask for the item to be added. The emergency item is in regards to the United States Health and Human Services Office of Refugee Resettlement and Consent to Accept Refugees. And, Mr. Clerk, have you all got that in a general sense?
Yeah, we got the resolution and the consent letter, and if anyone, the public was interested, I have copies up here.
And if I can ask for a motion to add the emergency item, Commissioner Boyle's motion is seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Yeah, this is what this is, sorry. This motion is declare an emergency and add this item. There's a motion second. Please vote. Well, I gotta add the item first. If it's not added, it's not there. So, okay.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh abstains. All the commissioners present voting yes.
Yes.
Would you read the resolution?
I am.
The four comments?
I am right now. Thank you for the deal. All right. This motion is in regards to, as I said, the United States Health and Human Services Office of Refugee Resettlement. And this is the resolution that's being submitted today, whereas on September 26th, 2019, President Trump issued Executive Order 1388A, requiring written consent from the state and local governments for future refugee resettlements. And whereas Luther Family Services of Nebraska is requesting Douglas County's approval, approve the attached consent letter as requested by Executive Order 13888 to continue legal refugee resettlement. And whereas the Douglas County Board of Commissioners has determined it is desirable to consent to the resettlement of refugees in Douglas County under the U.S. Department of State's Reception and Placement Program. Now, therefore, being resolved by this Board of Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, that the attached consent letter is hereby approved on this 17th day of December 2019. I'll read the letter very briefly. It's to Secretary of State Michael R. Pompeo at the U.S. Department of State, dated December 17th. Dear Secretary Pompeo, this letter is in reference to Executive Order 13888 on enhancing state and local involvement in resettlement. As Chair of the Douglas County Commissioners, I consent to initial refugee resettlement in Omaha, Nebraska, as per the terms of the Executive Order. I understand that my consent will be publicly released. This consent is valid unless or until withdrawn sincerely from me as the Chair. So, with that, is there a motion to approve this item? Motion by Commissioner Boyle is a second. Seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes. Do we have copies of any of these documents?
Yes, the copies were provided this morning to all the Commissioners, so they were on the Commissioner's desk.
I don't see one in my packet of documents.
No, it just happened. Let me give a little background on this. Thanks for that enhanced background. Wednesday was the conference... Wednesday in Kearney, Nebraska, was the conference of the Nebraska Association of County Officials. In that board meeting, this was brought up to notify all those board members, and it was brought up to notify people there that were chairs of the Board of this action and what was required of it. On Thursday, I got a little more information there at the conference. Saturday morning, this Saturday morning, I got an email from the... from Health and Human Services, the United States Health and Human Services regarding this. I immediately forwarded that email to legal counsel. They worked through it over the weekend and made some conversation. So, the deadline for this to get done is December 22nd. Lancaster County is doing the same resolution today. Another county in the county has passed it already, and my understanding, the mayor of Omaha has consented to do this, so that's the background. As of this morning, Diane prepared the resolution after talking with legal counsel last night, and this morning, they were put on... everything that was read here today was put on the Commissioner's desk this morning. So, with that, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And perhaps the county attorney could outline for us, what is the force and effect of Executive Order 13888 and our letter of response?
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. So, initially, Executive Order 13888 deals with the federal government, and the federal government has purview over the settlement, resettlement, initial settlement of refugees in the United States. However, through this executive order, the President has now said, "We want to cooperate with local government and receive their permission before refugees are initially settled in their jurisdiction." And so, it contemplates the state, so this is before Governor Ricketts, is my understanding, and that's based... there was an Omaha World Herald article on that a few days ago. And then also, so the state must consent, and then the local jurisdictions must consent as well for the initial resettlement of refugees.
So, has the state consented?
I don't have any information on that at this time.
They have none at this point.
Okay. If the state, through Governor Ricketts, does not consent, and we do, what's the effect of that?
So, the executive order does say that the consent of both is required, and that refugees would not be initially settled in that jurisdiction unless certain other conditions are met, including notification to the President.
So, this is a change from refugee resettlement policy heretofore?
I believe so. Immigration is not my strongest suit, but based upon what I've read about Executive Order 13888, this does appear to be a change, and local consent was not previously required.
Okay, thank you. You know, this is clearly an attempt by the Trump administration to restrict refugee resettlement, and it's part of their overall restriction on immigration policy. You know, as a grandson of refugee, I take great interest in this, and I think it's important that we make our position clear, that we welcome refugee resettlement in this community. We've always been open to that. Omaha and indeed Nebraska built on immigrants, and we should continue that. It might also be, I don't know, good if we sent a copy of this to the governor, so that he'd know that the largest county in the state of Nebraska takes this position. I want to commend the folks at NACO for bringing this to our attention, because this is an important issue, and I think that it's important that we take this stand. So, I'd be totally in favor of sending this to the Secretary of State and any other action that we need to take to effectuate our openness to refugee resettlement in our community. Be something I'd support. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
I'd only add, too, that from what I've read, the immigration numbers that have been imposed on our... the people trying to seek asylum and also enter the country legally is now the lowest it's ever been. And so, this is an attempt, I think, to restate the commitment that most of us have to welcoming people like our ancestors who came to this country. My family walked across the border from Canada. I think they were probably undocumented. They were sent over on famine ships from Ireland. So, I, too, share the same. We're all immigrants here, unless you're an American Indian. I don't see anybody in the audience that resembles an Native American, but in any event, we're all immigrants here, so this is just welcoming others like ourselves.
Seeing no comment, there's a... okay, please, if you're gonna come.
Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I, too, am all for legal immigration as we know it in the past. It helped build this country. But this quick reading of this ordinance, and without really understanding the Executive Order, I'd like to add my comments that. I'd like all of our local government boards that are cooperating with each other to tread carefully on this. Yeah, the numbers are down, but the citizens like me are concerned about the undocumented, but also a lot of these refugees that are brought in by the United Nations and by refugee resettlement agencies with my tax dollars, but in the dark of night and secretly into certain communities without the citizens knowing about it. And if you give a blanket pass-the-buck signature on this proclamation, I haven't had time to read it. I don't know that it was printed on the website. But an issue here is sanctuary cities, and the law of the land is the Constitution, and I follow this. There's been an awful lot of misuse of that in ways to skirt the protection of the now-legal citizens that were either naturalized or born legal citizens. At our expense, people have been brought into certain, lots of different communities without our approval, without a vote, and that's not what this country is about. Your First Order of Duty Constitution, which protect us, that's the first order of business. So, don't just give blanket orders to somebody else's interpretation of these ordinances, particularly bodies of local governments that all want to cooperate with each other for power. This is not about power. This is about protection of the citizen. Thank you.
Let me know for the record, this is not sanctuary city implication in any way. I am. And that basically, and I don't need to respond, this is not sanctuary city in any way. And note, this is just a new process to consent to the refugee process that's been in place in the nation for years. Any other public comment? That's a clarification. Well, okay. Well, okay, with that, we do have a motion.
Chair Rogers, I apologize for interrupting, but if I may, two things. One, the board has passed and voted on this being an emergency item, so it has been added to the agenda. So you may discuss it at your, at your will, at your leisure. It does not fall under the constraints of the Open Meetings Act that relate to citizen comments. Secondly, if I may suggest an amendment to the letter, if the board would so consider, the, the letter consenting, second paragraph says, I consent to initial refugee settlement in Omaha, Nebraska. And I, I believe that Douglas County, this board's authority and jurisdiction extends, extends beyond the city limits of Omaha. And so I would encourage the board to consider amending that to read Douglas County, Nebraska. I don't know that there would ever be a refugee resettled in unincorporated Douglas County. It was most likely that that individual or family would be resettled in Omaha. But I, I think it would be prudent to at least consider extending it to the extent of the geographic location of Douglas County.
No, fair catch. You got that? Okay. Change noted. There's motion, the second. Please vote.
One, one second.
Yeah. It's accepted with unanimous consent. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We're going back up now to public hearings. Item A is a Class CK dash 123336 license for beer, wine, and still spirits on off sale and catering license for Proof 192 LLC doing business as 123360 Proof 192 Whiskey Bar and Craft Cocktails at 18940 Evans Street Suite 107 in Elkhorn, Nebraska 68022. In Douglas County, and a manager application for Joel R. Lavelle, 1722 North 206th Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska 68022. We will now open the public hearing as anybody wants to have public comment on this.
Joel Lavelle, 1722 North 206th Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska with 192 LLC.
Okay. And you're just here for the record, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody have public comment on this item? Will close public comment. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
You're good?
Thank you, Colonel.
Item B, special use permit for landfill B. Specifically, tree and wood waste utilization. Dever, Barmeister, Larry Dever and Gene Barmeister applicants. Special use permit to allow for the recycling of tree and wood waste in reusable mulch products. With that, we will open the public hearing for this item. Doug.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Cook, your Douglas County Planner. So the purpose of this request, this special use permit request is to allow for the recycling of tree and wood waste into reusable products. The property is the old landfill site west of the active Pheasant Point landfill along North 216th Street. The proposed location of the mulch operation, however, was never landfilled. Our comp plan identifies the area as landfill and supporting uses. And the first principle in that plan states, the county supports recycling and reuse efforts so that resources in the waste stream are utilized. The proposed use will reduce, will reduce wood waste from entering the landfill and become a useful product. The planning commission has recommended approval of this special use permit request with six conditions. But let's go for a short drive here. So this is again, a special use permit. Where are we? Again, we're on the west side of 216th Street, right across from the operating landfill, which is right there. Here's kind of a blow up of the area. So where they are proposing, and you'll see this in just a second, would be in this area here, kind of like the east half there. This is the comp plan. And there, that's where it goes. So the comp plan has designated this LI, which is, stands for landfill and supporting uses. And tree and wood waste would be a supporting use. From a zoning standpoint, you can see all that green on there. It's agricultural, the property is zoned ag, and majority of the property around it is zoned ag. So this is a little more detail, excuse me, it's to four different like sites within the, the big site. So you see area one here, this is where the tree and wood waste would be brought in, it'd be stored, and it would be mulched. Area two, they have a product that they produce from that, and this is where the production of that would be. Area three, right down here, this is where the old scale house used to be, and that's where the scales are. So they are proposing to put a scale house back up there and get one of the scales working. And then number four is for a wood waste recycling project mostly involving wood pallets. Some pictures of the site over here on the right-hand side, this is a good picture of the berm. So on the right side of this berm, this is the tree area and there is an active waterway over there. And so the berm, I'm assuming was put up here when this landfill was active to protect it. You can see the culvert here. Over here where all these trees were, historically, there at one time was a retention pond there, but that has dried up and you can see Mother Nature has taken over. This is a little better picture of the area. So there would be tree and wood waste stored in this area where the cows are. Area number two, this is the production area for their erosion control product. Couple pictures there. Area number three, there's one of the scales, the scale house then would be located right in that nice green area right there. And number four, this is where the pallet operation would be. And number four would start on the far side of that fence. Here's our posted sign. This sign here, you might remember, a year or so, maybe a couple of years ago, we approved a concrete batch plant. And that is on this same property. In fact, the batch plant is right there. And that was through a special use permit. And that's still active. So the commission did recommend unanimously in favor five to nothing with six conditions. One is the, the site plan that they prepared, which you saw. This number two refers to an annual status report, which is a standard stipulation of all our condition, special use permits. Number three, they would like to operate following the regular landfill hours plus two hours. They'd like to stay open from 5:00 to 7:00 PM on the weekdays and from 3:00 to 5:00 PM on Saturdays. So they are proposing to expand the operation. One of the concerns of the commission was noise. And so the applicant will be grinding. So we, the commission did specify that grinding is permitted, but it is limited to the regular landfill hours, not the two-hour expansion we just talked about. Condition number five, this is also a standard condition. It talks about an early warning system so that if they have any buildings, there's a weather radio in there and all the employees have some way to be electronically notified if a storm's coming. And that is a standard condition. And number six is we want to protect that tree, tree area on the east side of the berm, and this addresses that. So the commission did recommend approval unanimously with those six conditions. And the applicant and the owners are here.
This is public comment. Anybody wants to comment on this item can now?
Barton Barcel, 304 41st Road, Bellwood, Nebraska. I'm here in support of the program. I would be partnering with the Bowrmasters and the Devers on this project. I would be the one that would be running the recycling program that would be, we would be doing there. If this site is improved, it's, our intent, one of the things that I would intend to do would be to set up a certified recycling accountability program. We currently run a program like that at our existing facility in Bellwood, Nebraska. Since our conception of this program on January of 2019, we have brought in just over 10 million pounds of material, which we have recycled into lumber, mulches, compost media, product called Fiber Berm, which is for erosion control. I was going to bring you a sample of the material, but I left it in my vehicle. Kind of got frazzled getting here this morning. Your, your interstates turn into parking lots. Saw more, more cars in a block than I see in my county in a whole day. So, so, but anyway, we make animal bedding out of the pallet waste materials. And then, so, but the, what the program, we, our acronym for it is CRAP program. It allows us to partner with businesses and municipalities. And so what we do is, is we, the material will come in, we weigh it in, and then we issue them a certificate of destruction and recycling along with a certified weight ticket. And then a lot of the businesses are working towards zero landfill impact initiative programs or maybe on a lead program. And so it has a lot of benefit to them as well. Another reason that we'd like to get this program started, the Omaha Parks Department has identified that there are approximately 35,000 ash trees in the parks and, and city right of ways. If you figure that the average DBA for those ash trees is 18 inches, which is probably on the light side, every one of them trees is going to weigh approximately 2,100 pounds. So you're going to have about 36,000 tons of material that is going to have to go somewhere here in the next four to five years. Those could be turned into products. There's also other diseases that are affecting the trees, especially in this part of the country. You've got some pine welt and some pine billow that's going on as well. We are anticipating that we'll probably see a 12% to 15% increase annually in materials coming in. And it's our feeling that it's a, a way greener way to deal with the wood waste system than it's currently being done. Any questions?
You do have a series of questions. In order, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Kraft, Boyle, Duda. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if the questions are to you or to you, but whoever. The owners of the land are who?
That would be the, the Bowrmasters.
Dever, Ron, and Gene Bowrmaster? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And the land is used for what now? The indication is it's not in use. It's fallow.
Good morning. My name is Larry Dever, 5719 North 167th Avenue Circle, Omaha, Nebraska 68116. I'm one of the owners of the property along with my brothers and cousins. We inherited this from our, from our parents. And you remember, you guys closed it up a number of years ago. And so since that, there's this 110 acres of property that's been unused. And we're trying now to figure out a way that we can use this for our family. And we thought, proposed after we've met with BJ and, and his family, this will be a very good use for part of this ground. So right now, it's being used for nothing.
So Mr. Dever, prior to this, what was the use of the land?
Waste management would come and take dirt out of it. And they would use it for capping as they were using the, created with the landfill. It was just, this part had never been, let me rephrase that. If you remember initially, it was 330 acres of ground. They only utilized about 150 or 60 for the, for the landfill, and then they closed it. For some reason, the board decided to close it and move across the street. So we have this unused piece of farm ground that we can't farm because of what the undulations of the dirt that waste management created when they dug all the dirt out for usage. And so it just sat there idle for the last, well, 10, 12 years since the landfill was closed.
So this was part of the landfill previously?
Originally proposed to be part of the landfill, yes.
Okay. And did you sell it or lease it to the waste management people for that purpose?
Sold it to them for, for their use. And then at the end of the contract, if you remember, that we could buy it back for a dollar.
And you did.
And we did after eight years of litigation. We have bought this ground many, many times over in litigation fees.
Now, and, and I'm all in favor of recycling. I think this is a great idea. I like the sounds of this a lot. Just so I know, the business model for this is you seek permission to go into commercial recycling. Is that right? This is a for-profit enterprise?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the land that you're going to utilize is going to be on the tax rolls, right?
Correct.
Okay. And as a matter of fact, it might enhance its value for tax purposes. Is that correct?
We would hope so.
Okay. The profit part of this, is this where the gentleman from Bellevue comes in? He's going to come in and kind of manage the recycling of the wood product?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry?
Bellwood, not Bellevue.
Oh, Bellwood.
Bellwood, so over near Columbus.
Ah, I see. Okay. And if you get the approval, I think there was a kind of a timeline in here that I saw at someplace. When do you anticipate actually going into production?
We're like, right after the first of the year. Right now is an idle time for landscaping companies. But we've talked to a number of them. Three or four of the largest ones in our market are going to Lincoln every day to get their mulch. And a lot of the mulch places around our market here in Omaha are small places, two and three acres. And we've got capacity out there to take this. And it takes about 50 to 75 years for a tree in the landfill to decompose. And we figure, hey, it's a profitable item. Let's reuse it.
Right. So if folks bring you wood, whether it's pallets or their ash tree or whatever, is there a transaction there? Do you pay for that? Or how does that work?
In some cases, yes. In some cases, no. It depends upon who they are.
I see.
So as an example, Douglas County has a, has an agreement with waste management right now for so many tons. And then I was talking to Jerry Brennan about that, and he says, after that, we've got to start paying to get rid of this stuff. And Landohaw can only take this much of it. And the guy on 48th and McKinley can take this much of it. And there's this much, particularly over the next four to five coming years.
And we use mulch at our house, and you know, different garden beds and stuff.
We do.
So you would provide that mulch to local nurseries and, and...
Absolutely.
Lawn care people?
Yes.
Okay. That sounds like a great idea. My hat's off to you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Commissioner Kraft.
So in some cases, you will be charging a tipping fee?
Yes.
Okay. But not all cases?
No.
Transportation of the, from one plot, I believe it was plot one, to area two, looks like it goes over wooded area or through wooded area. Is that correct?
Correct. Most of that is paved.
Okay.
Because if you'll remember, this was a landfill. And most of the roads that we're going to be utilizing are paved roads.
Okay. But they're all within the landfill?
Correct.
The other gentleman, what is an erosion berm?
What we, we produce a product, it goes into a netted sock and we put the mulch...
I know what it is now. Thank you. I just couldn't envision it at first. I'm, I'm very much in support of this. I think it's an excellent idea. The only thing that upsets me is Douglas County won't be getting the tipping fee from the landfill. How dare you? I, I think it's a good use of the product. Yes, sir.
If I might address that tipping fee?
Yes.
When you figure the cost to generate what a cell costs to prepare to place this, these trees into, that doesn't offset by the tipping fee?
I, I was joking.
Okay.
Okay.
Just wanted to make a note.
Just, just trying to do some levity in my own way. And that's, that's pretty much all I have. Oh, at the planning board, were there any opponents? I didn't read any in, in the back, but just wanted to clarify. Thank you. I'm done.
Commissioner Boyle.
I, I did want to ask about the tipping fees because of course, we share with, with, share when trash is brought into the landfill. But, so there's, you're not sharing a fee with us, the tipping fee or anything like that?
So when I was talking to Jerry Brennan, which runs the department roads... So, when I was talking to Jerry Brennan, which runs the department roads, he says, I've got to pay to take this place somewhere. I've got to take these trees somewhere. Because you know, they're cutting down trees, not every day, but almost every day. And then the city's going to have the same situation. So rather than take them across the street to pay a tipping fee, our tipping fee would just be less. He says, I'm all in favor of it, Larry. It'd be less expense for the county.
Yeah, and I'm very much, and I do have to disclose, I was the attorney who got the original site. Mr. Duda always keeps me on my toes, but I was involved in the sighting of that landfill, the one, the big one. So I declare that it is sort of a conflict of interest, we'll be getting into that subject. But I, we're talking about something that's not involved in that. But, and I really am very much for it, that's a great diversion. We don't want to bury trees. That doesn't make any sense at all. So, but if, but we're not getting the tipping fee, but, you know, the, the same principle would apply to the landfill, you know, because if we were getting, if we said, we're not going to, nobody would dump anything if they had to pay a tipping fee, they'd throw it on the street. Well, that wouldn't be a good thing either. So, anyway, we, there is some sanity to sharing in the tipping fee, but maybe we'll talk about that another time after you're operating, you know, and making lots and lots of money, I hope. And I, I'm very impressed by the demand. I was going to ask you, but the volume is incredible, and I do know that there's an awful lot of those trees out there. One of the questions that I asked informally when I was visiting with you gentlemen was the ash borer and other diseases that pine trees are suffering and so forth, those are all, those don't survive through all of this? And, you know, we're spreading all this mulch, and it turns out we're spreading all this, these bugs out there again? Is that, that doesn't happen?
No, it does not. They actually get destroyed through the grinding process.
Okay, that's great. Well, I'm not going to ask any more questions. You've really done a great job presenting, and I can tell by the way you're talking, you know what you're doing, and I really wish you a lot of luck. This is great. Really, really terrific.
Thank you.
Good project.
Commissioner Duda?
This is an idea that makes sense, and whose time has come. I've watched about 32nd and McKinley, a recycling operation that has just been booming. I mean, they've bought out several houses just to increase the size of their mulch pile. So I, and I think the timing is right. There are so many trees dying right now. The pallets is caught my fancy though, a little bit. We go through a lot of pallets, and now with food security, a pallet that 10 years ago you could recycle, you can't today. If I buy animal feed on a pallet, when I am done with that pallet, I'm not, they won't take it back because they can't reuse it, because they don't know that it is safe any longer.
That's correct.
And so there's all kinds of pallet, but how do you recycle pallets? I mean, the nails, how do you turn that into bedding?
The grinders that I have have multiple, they'll actually pass through five different magnets through the grinding process. And so we just, we just mag it all out of there.
All right, all right. I think this is a great idea. It's a good use for the property. I mean, next to an old landfill, there's only certain things you can do with it. I'm a little bit appalled when I drive across the Maureen Bridge and see the old landfill. Has cattle grazing on it? That's fine. But the leachate at the edge is their drinking water, and that always bugs me a little bit. But it seems like there ought to be a better way. This seems like a very good use for the property, and I'm excited to see it coming.
Got one more question. Commissioner Kraft?
How long have you been in business doing this?
71 years.
71 years?
Not me personally, but my father started the business.
Okay. And did Douglas County try to negotiate any special rates on mulch we might be using?
Not yet, but we're open for offers. I mean, you know, come talk to us.
He's the guy.
Because, because I believe we use a lot of mulch.
Yeah, you do.
We'll be talking to you. We'd appreciate special considerations. Does that sound like a little, no, I, we can't, I can't do that. That's not...
We have a favor to ask you, though.
Yeah, that's where I was trying to go. Thank you. I couldn't quit pro quo. I was trying to make light of that. Okay, just so you know, I was trying to make light. I have no other questions, and since you've been doing this for 71 years, I hope you have 71 years more or longer. Thank you.
Think this off up here. While we're still in public hearing, any more public comment from anybody in the public hearing? Say none, we'll close the public hearing. What's motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item C is adoption of the 2012 International Mechanical Code. Douglas County Environmental Services, the applicant, Doug.
Okay, as you know, we and the city of Omaha, we follow the city of Omaha when they adopt new building type codes. And so they recently adopted the 2012 International Mechanical Code, and so we, that is the purpose of this request, is to do the same. So the chart in front of you here will show that if you approve this today, the city and the county will be under the identical building type codes. And so the commission recommended approval, and we ask you concur with that recommendation.
Is this a public hearing, or any other, any public comment on this item? Say none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Duda is our second. I know. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Boyle?
I just wanted to ask if, usually in these code changes, there are, is some comment from unions and so forth, and other people who are involved in the business? Was there, or I see down here, is there any, was there any comment from any of the unions that may be involved in this, or not? Are any unions involved?
No, there were no comments during this process.
And no other, no other public comment at all?
Correct. There was no other public comment.
Okay, great. That's all I want to know. Thank you very much.
With that, there's a motion second.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Doug. Item seven, committee discussion and action. Letter A is finance committee. Item one is the budget report. Commissioner Morgan?
As presented, Mike, do you have anything on the budget?
Just, Joe's gone, I don't know. Did we check the banking account and checking account before he left?
Go balance.
He was in Las Vegas.
He was in Vegas. It would be a good time.
Correct. We'll go on to item C, child new service report. Item one is the third quarter juvenile detention alternatives, JDAI quarterly data memo presentation. Ms. Michelle Salter from juvenile probation.
Good morning. I think we have some handouts. Okay. So while we're getting the handouts, I'm going to just kind of explain what's in there. And listening to all that, I know that I need to be paperless this year. So next year, that is something we got to work on in JDAI. It's serious, and I know that. But I also want to give you guys really good information. I am Shelley Salter, and I am the Juvenile Detentions Alternatives Initiative Coordinator for Douglas County. So what you guys are getting today, and all of these you've gotten before, but I just want to remind you, the first thing in your packet is just kind of a list of terms and acronyms that we use. There is a copy of today's presentation. The presentation that I give you is regarding our quarterly review summary data memo. So the whole data memo is in here for you to review later. Also, if you like, as well as something new, we're going to talk about some four categories. And then lastly, and this is probably the la, I know I've brought this before, and it's just so important, just a copy of the Douglas County juvenile justice system map for you guys to have. So today, we're going to be looking at the third quarter of our data, so July, August, and September of this year. And just a reminder that we show this data to everyone. We show it in all of our meetings, but taking our data and turning it into something else isn't something that it is presented for. If anyone has any questions, they should absolutely contact us about what's on here. So with JDAI, we look at the system point of detention, and we've talked about this a couple times too, I know. It's just real important that people understand there are nine different points in the juvenile justice system where adults are making decisions that can change the trajectory of the lives of the kids and families we serve. With JDAI, we look specifically at detention, knowing that this is a system point that does cause harm to children. There is trauma to be found in detention centers. And so we look here first, making sure that the kids that we are detaining are kids that are truly risked to our community, and not kids that are simply not listening to orders that someone is giving them. So today, when looking at the system map, the point that we are looking at is detention. And then first, as we always do, and I know I tried making the fonts and stuff bigger this time, I can see on the screens that I don't know if they're the best yet, but you should all have a copy in front of you of the PowerPoint. And the first thing that we always do with our data is we want to look at it from the lens of racial and ethnic disparities. So one of the things that we have learned from the KC Foundation is to kind of track our kids through what we call the RED, or Racial Ethnic Disparities Funnel. So we know up top left, that is the total population of youth in Douglas County, tells us by percentage how we see our kids, 64% of the kids being white, 13% African American, 4% Asian, 18% Hispanic Latino, and then 1% Native American. So we start there, looking at what do our kids look like on the big picture across the county. And then their first contact into the system, a lot of times, can be through law enforcement. And so the next thing we look at is how are our law enforcement agencies contacting our children by race and ethnicity? What does this look like? And this is where we start to question ourselves, saying, why would, for example, 13% of the general population be African American youth, and yet half of the kids that all of our law enforcement agencies are having contact with? So this is how we start to look at points of the system, and again, this is regarding detention today, but this is another system point where we could look to say, okay, what is going on here that makes this happen? To find strategies, maybe to prevent kids from coming in the system even prior to law enforcement contact through maybe community programs, restorative justice, whatever it is, once you start digging there. So once the youth has contact with law enforcement, decisions are made where law enforcement officers can either call probation intake to say, I'd like to request attention on this youth. We think what has happened is something that is a threat to our community, and believe this youth needs to be detained. Or kids can be cited and released while they're with law enforcement. So that's the next thing we look at. So once law enforcement has had contact with the youth, what do the youth look like coming to probation intake? So the bottom left is the total youth as they come in to probation intake from law enforcement requesting that youth be detained. And then again, we see this number particularly with African American youth, it's 56%. So 56% of the time that law enforcement is asking that a youth be detained, it is an African American youth who makes up 13% of our total population. And then finally, to the bottom to the right, once law enforcement has called us, requested detention on a youth, this tells us how youth are actually detained once they come to probation intake, with just less than half of the youth in Douglas County that are being presented that are detained, being youth of color. So the RED funnel is really important to our work. It starts us looking at system points of places where we can just start asking questions to see if there are strategies to be developed. And this is, and this we've seen a couple times too, this is our actual quarterly review summary. This is the tool that we use to enter all the information. And like before, we're going to start way to the right. We had a total of 234 kids that we're considering, and we look way to the right, and we see 29 youth not screened. And that's an area for us that, that is something we look at particularly, because we want every youth who comes to the attention of probation intake or the juvenile justice center system for the purpose of detention to receive the benefit of a risk assessment instrument. We want a tool that is objective, that doesn't allow our gut to get in and make decisions about kids. We want that objective instrument screened on every youth that presents. And in this quarter, 29 times, and we'll talk a little more in detail about those later, we didn't get that benefit. There are youth detained outside of the normal probation intake process. To the left of that, it says two youth were detained due to an auto hold. So there are a couple reasons that we have to detain youth in Nebraska, one of which is if a child presents to us, that means law enforcement has made contact with the youth in the community. And when they pull that youth up in their computer systems, they find this is a youth who has a warrant from other, some other state. And when that happens, and there is another state that has a warrant for a youth to be held, we do in courtesy hold those kids until they can be returned back to the jurisdiction from where they're, they are from. So twice that happened to us in this quarter. The next left, these are the youth released, and that just lets you know, the top talks about the youth that were released, and under, it tells you how they scored on our risk assessment instrument. In the middle is youth released on condition. So these are kids that are being released to alternatives to detention. Their scoring on our risk assessment instrument is suggesting that these kids be served in the community, that we locate an alternative to detention for them. We know they need a little extra supervision. We don't want to release them home without anything, but they don't need to be detained. So that's what those kids are in the middle. And then to the left, these are what the kids look like that were detained in the Douglas County Youth Center in the last quarter. For the purpose of what we do, you'll see 53 of these kids scored high. So those are the kids that we would expect to see detained in Douglas County. They have scored high on our risk assessment instrument, something in their history or present is telling us they are a safety threat to our community. Those kids need to be detained until they see a judge and get the orders that we believe will rehabilitate them to be able to come back into the community. So the purpose of JDAI is really these kids that are under low and medium, but detained. So those are the kids that our instrument is telling us, these are kids we need to serve in the community. These are kids we need to find alternatives to detention for. These are kids whose families may be in crisis, but these are the kids we're really targeting that we want back in the community and not to be detained. So 234 is the total number of kids that we are going to talk about. 29 of them did not get the benefit of the risk assessment instrument. So what that means is 203 times law enforcement called probation intake with a youth that they believed needed to be detained, and probation intake then did their risk assessment instrument and made a decision on whether or not the youth would, would in fact be detained at the Douglas County Youth Center. So two of those kids, again, were kids that had the auto hold, they were out of state warrants. Of the 29 kids who were not brought to probation intake, these are the kids that did not get the benefit of the risk assessment instrument. All of these kids were detained. 20 of them were detained by a court order, meaning they were in front of a judge for whatever reason, and the judge detained them there at the hearing. Three youth lost their alternative to detention program, meaning they were in some kind of an alternative to detention, violated some type of rule, and again, then were detained by the ATD provider. We have three youth that were, that came in this quarter because of US marshal holds, and they were detained. We have one youth who was a county court youth, so this kid was in on adult charges, transferred back to juvenile, bringing him into our juvenile data, but the risk assessment instrument would not be done, only because we are closing them out as an adult and keeping track of their length of stay as a juvenile. And then we have two kids that were detained for what is called a YRTC detainer. The YRTC is the Youth Rehabilitative Treatment Centers. They are in Carney and Geneva. And I believe everyone knows that when a youth goes to one of the YRTC's, that they are under HHS jurisdiction then. These are kids who ran from the YRTC, and warrants were issued out of Buffalo County for them to be located, to be returned, but they are Douglas County kids who were placed out there when they ran. And then again, just looking at it again, I feel like it's always important for us to look as many times as we can at race when we're looking at kids. So this is all the kids. The blue line is the total youth by race, how they were presented. And then the red one tells us of those kids, how many were detained. And the green, again, is kids who did not get the best benefit of the risk assessment instrument when they are detained. And again, this is another place for us to look. We see 21 African American youth, 10 Hispanic youth, two American Indian or Alaska Native youth, and two Asian youth, or excuse me, take the two Asians, stopping at, American Indian, Alaska Native, again, detained without the benefit of that risk assessment instrument. We really want kids to get that benefit before a decision is made whether or not they are detained, and we see that often in youth of color. So this is just a place for us to take a deeper look to find out what's happening there. Okay. So of the 203 kids who were given the RAI, 78 of them were detained, 48 of them were released back to their parent or guardian, and 77 of the kids who came through probation intake were released with an alternative to detention. So the average daily population of the Douglas County Youth Center for the third quarter of 2019, for kids on juvenile charges, is 45.5, average daily population for the quarter. And then youth with adult charges, again, when it comes to JDAI, we are really looking at those kids with the juvenile charges, but I know that the conversation is much larger for you all. So the adult kids were about 31.6. Every day, we had at least 31 youth in the Douglas County Youth Center on adult charges, with a total population of the quarter, if you combine the two, of 77. So that would be the total average daily population of the youth center in quarter three. So 77.1, if you add the two.
I'm sorry?
45.5 is the kids on juvenile charges in the third quarter.
I'm sorry, you said something about the number of youth that were held, I missed that.
Held in the Douglas County Youth Center?
Yeah, what, did you say that?
45.5 for juvenile charges.
Right.
31.6 of the youth were on adult charges, for a total of 77.1.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no problem. And so actually, Commissioner Boyle, let's see, reasons youth were detained. So Commissioner Boyle, actually, we talked about this in the Child and Youth Services Committee and brought up a very important point there that I really want us to talk about here today. So why are kids detained? So what we have in this quarter, we are showing 37% of the kids are detained for technical reasons. That's 29 of the 78 youth who are detained. 63% of the kids were detained due to offenses. This is crimes that they had committed in the community. 49 of the 78 were actually detained due to offenses. So if we look the last line, in the third quarter of last year, that was just about half and half, and this is something we've been talking about in JDAI for some time. And the part that we're really trying to change, so if we look at...
Yeah, could you explain technical reasons?
I absolutely will. Next slide, what is a technical violation? No, because this is so important, and Commissioner Boyle brought it up, like I said, at Child and Youth, and it's such a great question, so I want to spend some time on it today. So for technical violations, we are looking at warrants or violations of probation. So in the third quarter of 2019, 28% of our kids were detained because of some type of a warrant, and that is 22 out of the 78 kids were detained because of a warrant. Now, last year in the same quarter, it was 33% of our kids, 33 out of 100. So those numbers are important because I want people to start recognizing that second number is the youth detained. So last year during the same time period, we did have 100 youth detained compared to the 78. 33 of them had warrants, and 22 of them had warrants this quarter. So that's just a little discussion about warrants. And then the other technical violation being violations of probation. And in this quarter, we had seven. At the same time last year, there were 16 youth admitted because of a violation of probation. So when I started, I was told that our target populations were warrants, and then the racial and ethnic disparities that we see in our system. So looking over time since I started, I think the highest we saw was the 56% in the first quarter of 2017, and a lot of ranges here of what percentage of our total kids were detained because of warrants. So in this last quarter, it is 28. This is a number that we want to see go down. These are kids that we are already serving. We want to know that if a kid comes up, we don't know where they are, we want the relationship with the probation officer to be that, that they're able to make a phone call, text a kid, get a response back, find out what's going on, get them into court as soon as possible. So the 28, although we've seen it before, this is something that is credited to the probation department and the changes they have made in engaging families in their graduated incentives and sanctions, and finding other ways to work with kids that aren't detention. So this number is going down, and this is what we would like to see. We don't like to see kids being detained because of some type of a technical violation. And then technicals total, that would be the warrants and the violations of probation. And again, when I started, that number was about 81% of our kids that we were seeing, we were seeing because of some type of a technical violation of their probation, or a warrant that they got for running while on probation, and that number in this quarter is 37. So this is what we're really looking at. We want to get rid of the reasons kids are detained because of something technical, and we want kids presented to us to have new charges. So I know, like I said, Commissioner Boyle had brought it up in Child and Youth, I thought it was important to bring back today, because not every indicator is just a round total number of who's there. And then kind of the same idea here to show some things from years past. On the left is our average length of stay. This is certainly an issue for our county. In this quarter, our average length of stay is 50 days. It's my understanding that nationally, that number sits around 20 days, so this is something that we're always looking at. In Douglas County, we do have a case processing committee that looks specifically at the amount of time that youth are detained and not moved into services. And through that committee, you have heard many times about the pre-detention hearing staffing calls. Those continue between the county attorney, public defender, or private bar, and probation officers on kids that are on probation coming through to figure out, what is the history of this youth? What do we know? What service do they need? What is the risk to the community that needs to be mitigated to move them back home and into services? So that committee looks specifically at that. The Douglas County Youth Center hired over a year ago, I think, an expediter, and this expediter role is one that the case processing committee is working with. How can we expand that role to do follow-up with, whether it's with legal parties or a provider, to get the information that we need to present to a judge to move a kid into services? And then Douglas County has also applied, in the last couple weeks, there is a length of stay sort of capstone project out of the Pew Institute in Washington DC. So we do have a team that has applied to be a part of that. If they're selected, they'll go to Washington DC for a week and study just this topic so that they can come back and help us dig down on this data better, to see what else we can do to get these kids into services. We don't want kids in the youth center for 50 days not getting the service they need towards rehabilitation. And then on the right, very important discussion in any county, this isn't limited to Douglas, looking at racial and ethnic disparities. And when we first started doing our data memo, we just weren't real sure how to even show this. How do we even tell this story? What do we call it? And so we just simply say that, what is our percentage of kids that are youth of color in the Douglas County Youth Center? And so in this quarter, that averages 78%. I brought the last three years because I really want everyone to see what the total numbers look like. Going, say, to the third quarter of 2016, the 101 is the number of youth of color that were detained in that quarter. The 130 is the total number of youth detained in that quarter. So when we look at the 78%, although still is not okay, and we all understand that, and we would like to know what we could do to get community providers up and running that kids and families could go get their service to, when we look at this, we also need to recognize how the total numbers have gone down. So although our rate of kids of youth of color remains very high in the Douglas County Youth Center, there is progress being made overall as to the number of kids that come in to intake and find themselves detained. So I felt like this was important for you guys to have today to take a look at. And then finally, this is our average daily population over time, starting with 2015, Q3, quarter three, is 45 and a half for this quarter, and just shows you over the last four years what that average daily population looked like in this same quarter. So I know that, oh, I want to do one more thing real quick. So you also have attached, which I am not going to go over today, but I want to just explain so you guys know, I know when you guys all want to go read these tonight because they're also fun, right? So this is our new way to look at data for JDAI, and we look at it through four categories. And the reason for that is what we find, again, if you can find more ways to make the kids compare into a group to figure out what's happening there, it breaks the information down for you and makes it not so big to tackle. So we do have four categories of kids that find themselves in the Douglas County Youth Center. They are kids that are pre-adjudicated, they're new to the juvenile justice system, we have no history on them, they may not be being served by any agency, so those kids are new to the system, they're pre-adjudicated. And then we have the youth on probation, which is in here also, and that's just kids that are detained that are on probation when they come to see us. The next category is kids with adult charges, and then the last one is other. And again, I'm not going to explain this today except for a little. This is kind of our first attempt to, in Douglas County, to really look at, REGO is what it's called, and that's looking at kids by race, ethnicity, gender, geography, and offense, and that is called REGO. So for each of these, you will see race, ethnicity, gender, geography, and offense for the category. And so this is just another way for us to look at it. You also have on there the map of Douglas County, will show you where your area is, your district is as a county board member, and how kids come from there. And this is just another way for us to break it down and see, for example, pre-adjudicated youth have an average length of stay of 54 days. Is there something different we could do just with that population to move them more efficiently through the system? So this, again, is not one I'll go over a whole lot today, but I do think is one for everyone to start getting used to, take a look at. If you have questions, you can always email or call me, because this is something we're going to see more often in 2020 to help us kind of make the kids equal, to know which way to look for strategies.
For just a second.
Yeah.
REGO, R-E-G-O?
GGO, it is race, ethnicity, gender, geography, and offense. And as it relates to justice systems, whether it's juvenile justice or the adult criminal justice system, always an important way to look at things, to try to make sure you're comparing apples to apples and not apples to sometimes rocks, I see, where not even fruit that we're comparing, right? So that's what that is.
Acronyms next time.
Oh, I will, sure.
And also, in the acronyms, you start off with RED, but on that page, people who see it on TV don't know what RED means.
Right.
Later on, you explain it. So please put that in the acronyms also.
We're terrible. I could do a whole conversation with them, I think, without using any other words except for maybe the and and or and in between, right? All right, and then finally, a conversation. I know you guys get copies of the census, and a discussion that I know is happening in this county is in regard to our fourth quarter. And there was a day, a couple weeks ago, December 6th, well, was that a week and a half ago, where our population was 95. And I get a lot of questions about things like this, and so I need everybody to know one thing. One day is not our whole year, first of all. And I have been asked about that day, and I need everyone to know that day is in the fourth quarter, and right now, we're breaking down third quarter. And so I know everyone wants to know, but Luke and I are kind of really trying to stay on task because there's so much here that can ping us down rabbit holes. But I will tell you that in this quarter, we did have six days where we had, or six times where we had groups of kids come in as a group of six, seven, or eight, and that whole groups of kids were detained. So that makes a big difference to our population when that happens. And wanted to bring this here too, because I've had a couple people say to me in the last week, well, we're one MIP party away from the youth center being full, right? And the answer to that is no. Kids who get a minor in possession or an MIP generally get a ticket and are released to their parents. So the only way an MIP party could result in kids going to the youth center is if at that party, one of the kids maybe had a warrant for their arrest, right? When the police were to go out. Now, that's a whole nother topic in Douglas County. When I first started, our warrant list for kids was pretty long, and I think the last one might have had maybe 45 kids on it. So if all 45 kids were present at the party where everyone was getting ticketed for MIP, then you bet in that case, we would have a whole bunch of kids come into the youth center. The chances of that happening are pretty slim. So we have to be careful, because I hear people say things like that, and it just makes the discussion more difficult. A giant MIP party is not going to fill the Douglas County Youth Center. So that's kind of what happened in this quarter. We do have six days where we had some pretty, pretty large groups of kids come in on new charges. So that's all I have today. Any questions?
Commissioner Kraft, Boyle in Capitol.
Thank you, that's a very good presentation. The risk assessment tool we use, the objectivity, the validity of it, and perhaps some bias to it. Have we studied that real hard to eliminate racial bias, historic, is it based upon historic incarceration? Because if it is, it's not valid. So have we done an analysis of that?
Absolutely. Here's what I can tell you about the risk assessment instrument. This is for the state, not just the county, everyone uses this. So Dr. Anne Hobbs with the Juvenile Justice Institute did attempt to validate our risk assessment instrument a couple years ago. And what she found at that time was that our override rates of the tool were too high for her to validate it.
Explain an override.
I sure will. So what that means is a youth comes in, we score them on the risk assessment instrument, and it scores and says to release this youth. But then we say, hmm, I don't know if I want to release, I think he needs an alternative to detention, so we're going above, going one step up of what the risk assessment had suggested. Okay? And so she was unable to because of the number of overrides. Well, at that time, our override rate in Douglas County in particular was about 56%. What we've seen over the years is that over rate has gone down. I think in this quarter, it was at about 30%. But what they said in that study was, if they were to look at the times where we did follow the tool and take the override information out just to do their part, that it appears that we have a very accurate tool, because when it is used, it works the way it is supposed to. So they're looking to try to do that again, because our override rates have gone down so far. We want to have this tool validated. Now, on the issue of bias or history, and we talked about this a little last time, and maybe next time, I should include this. I can tell you, here's how ours works. The first question is, what is the youth presenting for now? Is it a felony? Is this a misdemeanor? Is it a status offense? What is it, infraction? Why are they coming to us now? What is their charge? And they're given points based on what that charge is. The next question is, where is, what is this youth's status right now? Is this a kid who's new to the system? Is this a kid who is waiting to go to court because he just was in this situation a month ago? Is this the fourth time, and he's, you know, that he's been in with us within a six-month period or something? So there's different ways that tell us kind of where you are now, and you've gotten another charge, that the points are different for that. Then the next question it asks us is, was the first arrest before the age of 16? Because what research tells us is, kids who are arrested before the age of 16 are kids we tend to see again as they get older. So that's another one on there that helps us determine, is this kid a risk to our community, or is this a kid who needs services? So there are more questions on it. There is a section for mitigating circumstances. You have a parent who's willing to come get you, youth does well in school, engaged in pro-socials, different things. There are aggravating circumstances that you could put on there, of situations happening, failures to appear or something like that, that you could add to say, we know these other things about the youth too. And so there is nothing in there that asks where the youth lives, which is a common one in risk assessment instruments, might say, you know, is this youth likely to be arrested again? Well, if you're in Douglas County, Nebraska, and you live in 68111, the answer, that might be yes, but it might not be specifically about you. We don't have those kinds of questions in ours. So I could bring all of the questions next time if it's helpful. Those are the ones, there's a couple in the middle that I'm not remembering, but I can tell you that it is a tool we would love to have validated.
And I remember going through the risk assessment when I was new on board, and I asked to see it, and I didn't analyze it, because I've learned so much since then. I doubt if I can find it in my file, so if you would give it back to me, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Should the 29 people who did not get the risk assessment tool, I'd say I've got a light, I've talked longer than I thought, did they, should they have gotten the risk assessment after they were turned in by the various probation, et cetera?
Well, again, 20 of them were detained at court, and yes, my answer to that will always be yes, because I think for a youth to be detained, we should always be looking at that instrument, because it does help us flush out implicit biases or maybe frustrations we have with the youth. So it would be my opinion that every youth has the benefit of a risk assessment instrument.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft, yeah, if you want to hold, you got another five after this. Commissioner Boyle?
First, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the explanation and changes you made. Excuse me. I'll, first of all, what I would like to do is ask the staff to, I think it'd be helpful, or at least consider, having the Douglas County Youth Center report done at the same time she makes her report, because some of these things are so intertwined, it might be helpful, just a suggestion, it might work. One of the concerns that I have deals with the new location of the juvenile detention center inside the courthouse and adjacent, across the street, and it will happen, I suppose, someday. But I'm... But I'm curious about, when I look at and I ask the youth center the same questions, I never, I don't, I say I don't really expect you to give me an answer now because it's a very difficult question, I think. And I never have gotten an answer. So I'll ask you. We're supposed to be, you know, we had, and I know it's a snapshot, but we had 95 kids or whatever on a certain date. And we're supposed to be driving toward, you know, a much lower number. When we first started talking about this, it was 46 beds, and then it got expanded to something, I'm not sure where it was. But I said we should expand it, and I was told, we're not going to do it. And then the police came in and said, we need to do it. And I guess you're not an expert unless you're 100 miles from town. So anyway, it's bigger. I don't know what the final number was, but I do know there are, supposedly, there are alternatives with the Omaha Home for Boys. They're supposed to be redoing a cottage to take some kids in that will never go to the youth center. And young women will go to Utahole, and then other children, I think, who are involved, suffered trauma, will go to Child Saving. I really, I really am concerned. I'm a worry ward. I'm a worrier. And when I look at these numbers and I think, okay, how does all this fit? And when is it going to start with these kids getting diverted? You know, are there any kids at Omaha Home for Boys yet? You know, and what's the procedure? Are the police really being trained to do those things and counsel on all the things that need to be done? Because I'm still concerned and worried that whatever we do is not going to be adequate. I'm worried about that. The other thing I really am concerned about is I think we are, because of the programs and the way we do things, whether they're technical or whatever it is, all those words, that we're setting these kids up for failure. And one of the reasons is that, as I've said many times to the youth center people, we're dealing with children that have no order in their lives. I came across a young man who was involved in truancy, and I was told about this, what the snapshot is, that he was living with a woman who apparently was his mother, and there were two other young children, and I'm not sure what their relationship was. The woman left with a man and went to Texas. And so there was a 14-year-old boy in charge of this house, poof. And he had two siblings that he was, young children he was trying to take care of. He sent them, sent them to school, and he missed his bus. So here he is, 14 years of, 15 years of age at home, ready to house, no one knows about it, and he's, so there he is, and now, now, now he's truant. And so he gets yanked out, and then the children are moved around and so forth. But I mean, it, and we ask him to, you know, we put him on probation or whatever ends up happening, going to court and all these things taking place, he's had a real difficult time to begin with. And his life is not orderly. So we're saying, okay, in terms of probation are this, this, and this. And he just blows it off. It's just not, not a big deal to him. Well, then he's in violation of probation, and then everything spirals. There's a story that's true about a man who was driving with no license plates, and the police spotted him, and so a chase began. And this is a true story. And he, on the north side, so he ran to a relative's home, an aunt's house or something, parked the car in the back, thought he was safe. He wasn't. He ran into the house, ran upstairs, there was a chase going on. He went out the front window, slipped off the roof, and died. Well, these kids aren't dying, but pretty close to it. And I'm really concerned about all this coming together. I really am. I have met with the people from Sherwood and talked about this again. So I'm really concerned that this, I just don't know how all this is going to take place. And I know that, you know, the lawsuit doesn't help, but it's, it was the right of the citizens to do that and that sort of thing. But it has stalled the changes that hopefully will make big differences. The last thing I'll say, and before the light goes on red, is that, you know, and I would be curious how all these kids fit into these alternative programs that they're talking about installing that work so well in Minneapolis and other, Portland and everywhere. But I really am concerned about, I read, the Archdiocese of Chicago brought a priest in from San Francisco, and he has dealt with gang kids and started a bakery and did all sorts of things. His name is Father John Boyle, he's a Jesuit, no relation. And anyway, he was talking about how the things that actually that we are trying to put into place don't work. And he said, you need to, you need to go to the, you know, the children need to be coming to us, not vice versa, and they, their terms, sort of thing. I don't know how that works, what he's done. But anyway, I'm, I'm just rambling here, but I'm real concerned that this isn't, this isn't matching with what we're trying to do, isn't matching with reality. So I don't know what you say to that, but...
I have a lot of things. So as it relates to Father Boyle, though, I'll tell you, I've seen him speak, I've read many of his books. Fascinating work, amazing man, with some pretty high-level gang members in Los Angeles. So write on for that. When you talk about the youth with truancy, who's taking care of the two younger children, know that that's not that particular story, but stories like that are not uncommon. So then you have to question, where is our compassion, right? Who's asking the question? Because to end up in the court system for truancy, which is a legal term, absenteeism from your school, there's a lot of people that miss that youth before they end up in a courtroom for that charge, right? And so, yes, it's, it's, from what we understand, maybe up 25% of the kids on probation are on probation for status offenders. And for some of us, that's an absolute no. If this is a status offender, we find ways to serve them in the community. We beef up our diversion program so that there's someone in the school and then maybe with the county that's overseeing it because we want kids to get the service where they live, right? So on all that, 100% yes, on everything you say. And that's where we're moving to, and we're seeing that more often, and we're hearing the discussions more often, when a youth's coming in to say, even through our objective admissions committee that we have, we look at every youth detained, and we will see law enforcement's a part of that meeting. And it's just about five of us that sit there. It's kind of a closed group right now because we are talking about kids, so you need to be a party to the case, some high-level people looking to figure it out. And many times, we look and can tell you where they were missed, where they were missed, where they were missed, and now here they are for us. And we don't like to see kids that are status offenders involved in the court because we know that there are issues with that child's ecology that brings them there. And yet somehow, at a certain age, it moves from educational neglect to truancy, right? The onus comes off the parent, and now is on the youth, you're 14, you didn't get yourself to school. So yes to all of that. As it relates to the youth center, I don't know that I have an opinion, but if we could show up real quick, if we can switch back, if we look under kids who are detained, who scored high, the answer for this quarter was 53. Those are the kids that you should see in the Douglas County Youth Center. The length of stay wasn't 50 days, and we were moving youth faster out into evaluations and into service. That number would, would move faster, right? And be more stable. As far as Omaha Home for Boys, Utahole, CSI, Boys Town, we have kids routinely, daily, put into alternatives to detention that are these places. And so part of that, too, is if you look down on released, and you have, sorry, let's see, 46, let's see, 40 kids who scored low and were released. Let me go to the next one. Released with conditions. 21 kids scored low and were released with conditions. That means 21 kids were moved into alternatives to detention who scored low, should have been released. So this isn't just about detention, the work we do. We're backtracking those kids, too, saying, do not give them the one more little thing that makes yourself feel better.
Right.
Let's follow the tool so we can validate it, so we can get the kids into the services they need with their community. I know that doesn't answer your question about the new building, but all I can say again is, the office chair that I have is probably from 1975, and I'm no more efficient with a new one. That I can tell you.
Thank you very much.
Just note, let me know two things, Mr. Boyle. There's been talk about how to put this with the DCYC presentation, but they're off by total quarters, and it's hard to do that. So unless you keep your files, you can come back. The point I just wanted to make with you about the numbers, and I, there's a lot of things to it, is that, just note, this was third quarter. The fourth quarter numbers you saw last week considers, and these numbers, too, consider that, they're down to juvenile judges. So that slows the process down some. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. Three quick things. I'm looking at metrics of average daily population, which I think totals 77 today, you indicated. And going back a number of years, that doesn't seem to have changed drastically. Is that right?
I would agree.
Yes, okay. The average daily population, you know, remains north of 75. And this is despite the legislative changes that were touted to bring that down this summer. Hasn't changed. Hasn't changed. And so if you go back a number of years, you're going to see that pretty much being flat. The average length of stay, again, hasn't changed much. You go back from this presentation to 2016, average day, length of stay, 41 days, 17, 50 days, 18, 48 days, 19, 50 days. Again, plateaued, no change. So you've got the high population staying about the same period of time. Racial disparities, and you and I have talked about this before, go back, 16, 77% minority detained, 17, 93% minority detained, 18, 80% minority detained. This year, 78% minority detained. Not really much of a change, considering they make up 36% of our population. I've asked you this before, and I, you know, we're all trying to get to this. Why are we detaining three times the minority kids in this community than the Caucasian kids?
Okay, I want to answer that, but I also have to correct myself, because when you said average daily population, I agreed, and I was thinking length of stay. So we'll go back to that because that actually has changed. And so what we know about racial and ethnic disparities is kind of what Commissioner Boyle was saying, right? So if we look at indicators for Douglas County and you pull up what are our general top zip code, 68111 being one, what do you find there? You know, the Court Improvement Project has a really great website where you can look at that, and you can, and you can lay over things like poverty or single-parent households or children with incarcerated parents, which we know in Nebraska is also a big issue. And so when kids are incarcerated, what are we, our parents are incarcerated, what are we doing to keep connection with kids? So there's a lot of reasons that racial and ethnic disparities exist. And I don't know that we're different than any other jurisdiction because they exist in the communities where people of color live. And there's lots of reasons for that. So I don't know that I can give you a specific reason, but where we focus is there anything about us and our implicit bias that's causing that to happen? Any kind of events or environmental things that are occurring that are making community members or people who do the work view kids in a different way? So we know we have a lot of kids in Douglas County with gun charges. We all watch the news. And what does that do to our kids when we have some of those discussions outside of a risk assessment instrument? So there's a lot of reasons why that happens. But if we could put the slide back up for average daily population, I want to disagree with you on that. This is the juvenile population over the last four years. And the juvenile population has declined significantly.
That's a good point. But, you know, I hate to be a lawyer on this. The distinction between the juvenile population and the population is a legal distinction. I'm talking about the population of children. And that population has not declined. You're right, the juvenile population, what you call the technical offenses and stuff like that, it's an interesting phrase, not a legal phrase, that has changed, but the overall population has not. The overall population has plateaued. It's stayed about the same. So these numbers aren't representative of the daily population at the Douglas County Youth Center. They're a subset of that population, and I appreciate that. And you've made substantial progress in the subset of the population. The overall population hasn't changed. That's, just so we're on the same page.
But the subset is what I do.
Yeah, yeah. And kudos on that. I'm talking, the number of kids detained has not changed. You know, when we're talking about things like building a kids jail downtown, that's what we're talking about. That's what concerns Commissioner Boyle, and it concerns me, because that number's not changing. You're not seeing a change. Despite all the touting of legislature changes the law, or we're going to have more diversion, the number remains the same, pretty much. And the disparity remains the same. And the average length of stay remains the same, pretty much. Those three metrics, you know, we're not seeing big changes. But kudos on this.
I'll give it to you on R-E-D, and I will give it to you on length of stay. I cannot say the same for average daily population, although I know we disagree, and there's reasons why. I just simply don't agree.
Well, I haven't had the chance to have you both here with Mr. Alexander, but he gives us average daily population, and it's in the high 70s, low 80s.
Let me make a point of correction on there. In the meeting that we just recently had, the statements made about the law not making a difference, I recall the data being given out that the law has hadn't affected some degree. But also, the legal distinction and the total population, I asked her to break those numbers out specifically because the point is, is that the argument is always made that you're putting people at risk. There's only about 40 to 30 kids that are really an issue of risk. The other ones are an alternative question. So again, I think it's relevant on the board to understand what the pressure points are because to get there, the board needs to be in a position to question the decision points. That decision point is law enforcement. That decision point is judiciary. That decision point is the county attorney. So to make it very simplistic as saying, nothing's moved, and that is not working, it's not it. There's, there's different points, and there's data that shows that that law has made a difference. But you have to consider the fact that there's two judges down, and there's some other factors that there. In the Child and Youth Service Committee meeting, Judge Brown made that distinction, and he mentioned the fact that they have a need for shelter care. So I'll just make that point, and when I get a chance to speak at the end, I'll elaborate a little more. Commissioner Kraft?
Looking at the numbers throughout your report, to me, it is apparent that the numbers are going down. They're going down very slowly. But it's like steering a ship. We are changing, we have to change the culture of the teacher who calls the police because a child has an outburst and the child might be autistic. And not everybody is trained on how to de-escalate, especially somebody who's autistic or developmentally We have to change the culture of the judges, well, we'll go back to the teachers, then the police officer, the different points that Commissioner Rogers. There's an institutional bias that we have. For example, I've used this before. I was talking to a gentleman, and he said, I was cut off by a black guy. And he was mad. He was cut off in traffic by a black guy. And I said to him, why do you have to say he's a black guy? You were cut off in traffic. If he was white, would you be less likely? I mean, if he was cut off by a white guy, he wouldn't have said a thing, period. Well, there's this institutional bias in all of us. I can't say I'm not without some. I used to judge people by their use of language, how well they spoke. And I learned at an early age, you know, 60 maybe. I waited till Clara was taking a drink so he'd gulp on it. I learned at an early age from my father that you don't judge somebody by that. And he taught me that you don't judge somebody by the color of their skin because it doesn't rub off. And you don't judge somebody by their disabilities. Because when somebody was blind and deaf and came into the store, and I didn't comprehend it, I'm using my time, but my father gave me the shh as I was trying to get the person to stop knocking things over. She'd accidentally ran in the store. My father said, can't you tell she's deaf? But how can we reduce the average length of stay from 50.9? That's by getting new judges. Getting two more judges in will decrease that, will it not?
I don't know that, I don't know that it's simple like that. I think that the length of stay is reduced more effectively by people who are doing the frontline work, who are working with kids and families, who know the families better than anyone else, giving good information of what the youth needs to leave the youth center. Judges only get the information we present.
Okay. And the one day when we had 96 children, how many, what was of the additional, well, this is not a way to answer it, but the average length of stay and the, some of those youth were probably in only for two or three hours, were they not?
No. They would all have been admitted for, no, they would not only be, they would be there at least 24.
Because I know we have so many children who come in and are released the same day.
That doesn't happen as much as it used to.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have anything else right now.
Can I, can I say, though?
Oh, please.
On something that you're saying that is so important, and it's important as I stand here and I look at everything in front of me, and as the people who look like me in this room, what you're talking about is so important, we have to educate ourselves. We have to understand what our privilege as white people might have led us to the place that we are. There's exhibits and things all over town, great books, resources that we can read. Because you're right, it's one thing to understand that we don't judge people by the color of their skin, but it is another thing to understand how our systems, things we're their skin, but it is another thing to understand how as systems, things were created in a way that makes that happen.
Right. I call it systemic, systemic racism.
Right.
Cultural, educational, I mean, I happen to be Jewish, and, and growing up in, at Dundee School, some of my teachers were very anti-Semitic. They didn't think they were.
Right.
But I could feel it. So I know that other ethnicities can also feel it.
You're exactly right. We are all really good people who sometimes make bad decisions we don't see. It's a really important part of this work.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I have a, I did ask this earlier, and I, it's kind of a very open-ended question, but one of the things that, what I, what I'm so interested in is children who end up, you know, running, for example, and where are they when they run and why do they run? You know, whatever it is that motivates them to get, get out of there, and it just makes matters worse. And I wonder also what our, what the relationship is between the treatment of youth and our social services department. Sometimes something is, well, new tennis shoes can make a big difference. And, you know, maybe not having enough to eat and all those sorts of things. I just want, I want to make sure that, you know, we're using that part of our government to the fullest as well because it could, could do some help. And the other thing, I ran into an attorney that I know who practices in juvenile court and had quite a conversation, and one of the things I was told was that there's a young man, as a matter of fact, he's thirteen years old, who is one of, one of the, one of the clients, and he goes to court, and he was, among other things, while he was on probation, walking down the street carrying a shotgun, you know? And a lot of things happened where children who are young like that, I think we, we all know that lots of times they're put into situations where they commit crimes because people who are older know that they'll be treated differently. They'll, they'll go to juvenile court most of the time. Of course, if the offense is different, things could happen, but I just, I just really, I guess I'd like to dig in even further and make sure that we're really using the, all the, all the tools we have in the county to try to make some of the simple things better for these young people. There was a giveaway recently of backpacks, and it was at Pace, the Latino police officers. And there was a, a young girl that was crying when she got her backpack, and so they found out why she was crying. She said, "I just want one for my brother like this. He'd really like it." So they gave her one. Something simple that responds and, you know, it's, it takes a great deal of obviously attention, but, and you're, you're doing a terrific job. I really appreciate these presentations. They're sometimes difficult to follow, but they certainly are useful. So I want to thank you for that very much, and sorry to be asking these open-ended questions for which there's no answer.
But, but you're right. There may not be an answer, but you're right. So many of our kids in our community, it really is about, you know, it's hard. The kids come in on charges, and we focus on that, and we focus on the youth, and we're doing so much better, even just in the last year, of understanding you can't focus just on the youth. What is going on that is causing this? Because there is always something. And then, how do you help the whole family when you find out? You're right. I mean, yes, this is work. We all come to work every day, but we have to bring our compassion with us, or this work can't be done.
I was at the girls' club luncheon yesterday, and a young lady spoke who's really, they had that slogan about being smart, strong, and all the rest of it. It's really pretty cool. And anyway, this young lady spoke, and she was talking about how she was going to be, going on to school, and she was going to become an engineer, and the place erupted in applause. And she had come from a very, very difficult time, and, and she talked openly about her father, who was an addict, and her mother, who was an addict, who still is. And, I mean, Girls Inc. is unbelievable anyway, but pulling those children out of that situation and treating, and, and letting them know they're worth something. There's one last thing I want to say. I have a, I have eighteen grandkids, and one of my grandsons and I were talking, and he told me one of the things that he's learned in school is to speak, speak to strangers. And I said, "What are you talking about?" And he said, "Well, you know, when we walk in the grocery store, I try to make eye contact with someone and just say hello to them, and 'How are you doing?'" And he said, "You'd be surprised at their responses." So I started doing it, and it's really amazing. So I walk into the grocery store, and you see a woman walking out who's not my religion, and she's a Muslim or something, you know, and just get eye contact and nod and say hello, and it's really surprising the smile that comes up. And I think it's, it's a signal that says to those people, we're all, we're all in this together. It's really an interesting, I love the response I get.
No, you're right, and goes with the discussion earlier, right, about how we treat people that are different. But again, and too, but just to kind of clarify, when you're talking about a mother who's an addict, and kids might need to be out of this situation, we have to remember the mother's an addict. It's not a question of love. How do we keep kids connected to their parents if their parents can't keep them safe? It's never a question of love when kids are remote.
Exactly right.
Silly thing, so I just want to make a couple of points, and just ask, you know, everybody, you know, as you, as you get, as you gain more knowledge of this, and this is the point of it, I mean, no, no questions are irrelevant at all. I think the only points to make, and everybody should be aware, is that, you know, there's times when I'm out and people ask a question about a kid and program, and then, and the answer that I've learned is understanding this is that, you know, no kid's situation's the same, no family's situation's the same. So in, in this world, it's hard to put things across. So I say that in the setting to say, you know, when this process started ten years ago, when the facility was up at two hundred and ten kids, it took about three years for everything to get really set and things to start going. So, you know, there's some things in place, but to say in six months that it should be down to that is, is not a fair comparison. I just think everybody needs to keep that in, in, in point. So, you know, the goal is, and Judge Brown has committed to coming, and there was a great intense dialogue that you put a whole, put a pin in these questions. I think he and Mary will try to, they're trying to come to the meetings monthly and answer those things more in depth, so it's kind of hit to some degree, so. Shelley, appreciate it, and to Commissioner Boyle's point, I don't know how we both, we can talk about how to make the correlation a little better. It's hard to do that at a quarter's distance and make that comparison, but I'll, we'll continue to sit down with that. Okay?
Thanks for what you do. And you're right. Shelley, thank you. And if I could come, we never admit that Commissioner Boyle is right.
Okay. You know, I thought that, but then I thought I didn't know if anyone else was listening, so I would try. But I also did send everything to Chris, PowerPoints.
And I forwarded all that to everybody. You wanted to comment on this? Larry, there you go, five now.
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. She's very good. And thank her. Thank you, ma'am. You know, one thing that glares at you as you flip through these flip charts that she presented today, the first one is that big word disparity. The next one is the seventy-nine percent and higher. And of course, the next one is top of the ladder, the black population. Bottom of the ladder, white. Words do matter. And yes, we're all trying to perform some good solutions here. But perhaps we lose sight of something here. Human nature. I remember growing up being treated differently because I lived on the south side of the tracks, or I lived in the lower part of Council Bluffs instead of in the hills, or my folks were railroaders instead of bankers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And yeah, I was chubby. I looked different, so I was teased. Human nature. But there are so many meetings in Omaha with community partners and people like yourselves that are trying to come up with solutions that leave us with this. Yes, disparity and guilt. And I walk away from a lot of those meetings of community partners and people like yourselves that leave me with the big feeling of guilt for all of the racial disparity. I'm sorry, I didn't do that. My wife didn't do that. My neighbors didn't do that. My parents didn't do that. Stop holding us responsible for disparity and come to some solutions that basically mean talking about human nature. Excuse me, I don't get why somebody files charges on seventy-nine percent of the blacks and very few percent of the Chinese are white or Spanish. I don't file those charges. I don't make those accusations, but it seems like, if you look at the charts, the deputies or the sheriffs do, the schools do. So don't blame me for it. I didn't point those kids out to anybody and say, "He's a problem," or "She's a problem." Somebody else did that. So don't blame it on me. Thank you.
I'll make a point, and I'm gonna leave it short. You know, Larry, if you're feeling guilty, I think that's the point to start discussion. But I just wanted to be clear. The issue of racial and ethnic disparities is not that it could be compared to human nature. There's too much on record that's intent of public policy that has been tainted toward people of color federally, state, and other things of sorts. So if anybody hears anything from that, human nature is not the cause of the disparity. It's institutional policy, it's bias and other cultural conditioning, and to say the simple facts, you know, there, there are still people around this building that say they have no implicit bias, and I've heard them say it, and that they don't see color. And to say that while we're talking is like you don't see, you know, me right in front of your face. So I just say that to say to it is that this is institutional, and no one should ever compare this to human nature. No kid comes out the womb taught this. So with that, we're going to the next item, and what do you, you got something pressing?
Well, I don't know if this is public comment or not. Is that what section we're in?
It's not, but I'll, I'll allow you as a citizen to say your part as you are.
Okay, Shelley Salter, three five four one two, East Park Highway. Just want to say a couple of things on that because it's hard, and it's a lot of work I've been doing the last five years, guys, and it's real hard to wake up white. And there is a book, and that is what it's called, Waking Up White by Debbie Irvin. I suggest you put it on Audible, listen to it on your way to work, on your way home. I did myself. It will change your life. I used to say the same thing. I don't, I don't have responsibility, and my grandparents were here during the Civil War, and I didn't have responsibility. Reparations does not mean money. Reparations means we repair the breach for these kids, that we figure out what is the bias that's implicit in us that's causing it to happen, that we find the community providers who can respond to culture. When you say you don't see color, then you shouldn't be working frontline because we need you to see the color, we need you to respond to it, we need you to know the culture, and we need you to help the family. So just real quick, Waking Up White, Debbie Irvin, worth your time.
Claire, you had a spoke, give you a chance to.
Very quickly in closing, it's hard not to take a little bit of offense when you hear things like implicit bias, but this is not about blame, it's about improvements and solutions. I'm not blaming anybody for any of our problems. We're simply looking for ways to make it better.
You got a point, real quick point.
What I'd like to make is to, to agree with what you said, you know, the, we have a responsibility as human beings to, to act on what we see. And I was raised in a household, and I, Ann and I raised our children the same way, that racial slurs hurt people, they're not to be ever, ever to be spoken, no jokes about it, none of that. And the same thing applied to women, no jokes about that, all that stuff. And it's really hit home. And I think hatred is taught. I have a relative who's married into the family, who came from a family that was really unbelievable about their attitudes toward African Americans and other people who are different, who don't look like, exactly like us. And this person has had a complete baptism in coming to grips with racism, and, you know, it really is, it's really interesting. I'm gonna listen to that, that book, Waking Up White. That's interesting because there is a, there's a privilege. It's the way it is.
Thank you all. We'll move on to item D in this community services. Item one is the reallocation of twenty nineteen, twenty-two visitors, improvement funds, awards for the Omaha Sports Commission. As was noted in there, I guess the request is, an event that they got money for was canceled, and they've asked to move it to the swim trials, which is a big event happening here next year. So what's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Morgan.
Question on that. Is, is there a problem with it being next year? I mean, don't the funds?
No, I think there's, there's points where funds have been allocated for previous years.
Very good, thank you.
Clerk, Mr. Clerk, you ready? Note, I am abstaining because I sit on that board.
Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstains. Other commissioners present voting yes.
We have a need for executive session for?
Litigation, please.
Litigation, that's all?
That's all.
Okay. We reserve the right to enter into executive session in order to protect the public's interest with respect to discussion regarding litigation. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Morgan to go into executive session, seconded by, I hear, Commissioner Boyle. Again, we're going in for litigation. Please vote. And to everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy Holidays.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I didn't know where to go. You stuck that in. I got that script.
You vote yes, Commissioner Boyle? All right. Motion passes, six to zero.